This meeting is being recorded.
Wow, good crowd.
No one wants to hear you.
Yeah, everybody was.
Did you send the agenda by email?
No.
Did you use the voice?
Yeah, I tried to.
I don't know what you usually do.
Yeah, no, we should and tend to try to.
Of course, I can't find it on Facebook. Let's go get a printed copy.
I should have left one on your... Oh, maybe Jay took it.
I have a copy here though. I just like to keep it so I can see what...
Okay, mine is all with him.
There should be some right up there.
Does this work for Steve? Thirty-nine here, forty-eight.
Oh, okay. Is that typical in the meeting session?
Shoot, that didn't start. Thought I was doing a good job coming half an hour early, but...
I don't know. It'll be easier if you're late after dinner. Don't get into the discussion.
Is it a problem that I'm on the payment list for the warrant?
No, you just can't be making money off of anything that's being voted on.
Two of the minutes.
Sandra has nothing.
Can Sandra sign this or are you going to need to wait for Sue?
Oh, she can sign it.
I was here, but I wasn't a selector member. Does that matter?
No. That wasn't approving time anyway. This is approving time.
True. It looked like the meeting I attended.
You're in the minutes, so you're most to go there.
Were these tax payments we collect for Elliot's fill-in blanket?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're excise tax on their vehicles and boats.
Gotcha, okay. But not real estate tax?
Right, no. They don't even pay us here for that.
Okay. It didn't look like very large bills, so...
No. We don't have any large bills over there, you know.
Not like...
Bigger than that, though.
So, I have to sign this thing? No, I can't. It's got Eric's name on it.
No, that one either. I would say, yeah.
Right, there was just that one payroll one that he signed.
We looked at all of these. If I missed something, let me know.
Okay, well, we'll let you down.
All right, we got the warrant signed, the minutes approved. Next up is public comment.
Yes, here on behalf of the historical site. And we've taken upon ourselves over the past two or three years to transcribe all the cemetery records that the town has and added quite a bit to them from missing information. And we ran into a few issues that I just wanted to bring to your attention. And of course, the work has been done to the old Churchhead Cemetery that you're familiar with, straightening up the stones and so on. The Lake Road Cemetery, Marty had asked me a month or so ago to try to nail down where a specific lot was. And that was relatively straightforward, but it turns out that the first row or two of lots were marked with lot markers in each corner of the lots. But it hasn't been done since then, and so as you go further in this direction, it isn't 100% clear where the lots actually are. They're numbered and there's a diagram, but physically on the ground, it isn't clear. And either a survey or something should be done so that it is clear where the lots are. It wouldn't surprise me if people buried there in some of the lots think they're in one lot and they're in another lot. And I think it should be done before, too long, before it gets out of hand, if you will. I did talk to John Wetworth about making lot markers. You can buy these machines that make lot markers relatively expensive. The other option is to make them out of plastic wood, engrave them, and, you know, put them in the ground. So, there's a bunch of different options, but I think something should be done so that it's clear where the lots are.
How many lots are in the cemetery?
Well, it's A through J rows, and there's about, what, thirty per row?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
And the first, I'd say the first couple rows, you know, the one towards Greenville, which those lots are a different size than all the rest of them. It turns out there is a space between each lot. And you can tell from the numbering that's there now what was intended. But then evidently people resulted in putting in a little piece of plywood with a nail or something. Those have, you know, kind of disappeared. So, I just think something should be done to measure it out and lot it out, so to speak, so that people who have purchased lots, you can actually tell them where they are.
Yeah, because I do get calls, you know, and it is hard.
Yeah.
And it's usually, you know, talking to other people who are in upstones and just figuring it out. And that would be really helpful.
Are there companies that do that? Or are we talking to surveyors to come in and...
Yeah, I think that's what you need is a surveyor to... I mean, I don't think it would take much. It's, you know, it's basically...
Was there a name on that other one that we were looking at for the North Delford Road Cemetery, or who did it?
Yeah, that guy died a long time ago.
Okay.
He'll be buried in that cemetery, the D block.
Never mind then.
But that, yeah, the Hillside Cemetery does have an actual survey. It's an old, old survey on linen and it's, you know, in really rough shape. But I recreated it, just redrafted it, so we have, you know, the dimensions and so on. It's still, even up there, it isn't entirely clear, as we found out where the lots physically are. Some of them are numbered, some of them have granite posts in them, but there's some work that could be done there. Well, the entire cemetery was surveyed, and so we do have a survey of the whole thing. And so, and there aren't even lots being sold up there, I guess, so it's somewhat more straightforward, I think, than the other cemetery. But there are some issues, as we found out the other day. In the old Churchhead Cemetery, I think the biggest issue there is, you know, just finishing the work that they've got very well along. But the trees are an issue. There's a couple of really dead ones that absolutely need to come down. Then there are other ones that are spitting off branches now and then that I don't know that they need to come down, but somebody who does that kind of work needs to look at it and see what they would recommend so that the stones aren't destroyed by branches falling out of the trees. The cemetery now is in very good shape. There's still work that needs to be done, but it's drastically improved. And I think overall, what we need is a sexton. And we don't have one evidently, although some people think we do and have talked to the person. They think it's a sexton. And so, there are people buried, for example, in the Lake Road Cemetery that the town had no information on because the person who buried them didn't provide any information to the town. So, whether it's, you know, something you pay for or not, having done many hundreds of hours of work on the cemeteries, it's not an insignificant job and it can be confusing, lots of details. But I think the town needs a sexton. And that would help at least get it to the point where it doesn't get any more confusing.
And just so you know, I did talk to Chris about, you know, what he's done over the last couple of years. And he is going to look back through his records and try to get me as much information as he can. And I also, when I was talking to Ethan at Larry Funeral Home, he said he'd help in any way, too. So, I feel like between the three or four of us, we should be able to bring it back up to speed. And I still intend to talk to Sue about how it was done previously. You know, if she feels like it was all really up to date when she left or not, I just don't know. But we'll figure it out, I'm sure. But a sexton, a second man.
When did we last have a sexton? Do we know?
Three or four years ago.
So, it hasn't been that long?
No.
And was it a pit position? Was it a pit position?
No, it wasn't. And also, when that person stopped being the sexton, they never brought anything to the office. So, whether, you know, I could... But he may have relayed the information to Sue and she updated it here, you know, as they went along. I just don't really know, but we'll find out.
You know, just for example, as we transcribed the Hillside Cemetery, there were people buried there that there was no record in the book, in the town book.
Yeah.
You know, just for example, Bob Griffith, he died a number of years ago. No record. It appeared to be fairly common that if somebody was cremated, there may not be a record. Better than average chance that there was no record that they're there. So, I just think that whole thing needs to be...
Yeah, and I've had people call here that have urns, you know, they'll call here in the winter and say, "Oh, we want to bury this urn in the spring," and, you know, people can do that themselves. And I always request that they just please let me know when it's done. And I don't think anybody ever has. But if it was all done under the direction of a sexton, I think that, you know, it just... So, people just do it and then, you know...
Just for example, in the Lake Road Cemetery, it isn't clear where in the lot people happen to be buried.
Right.
Not always. Sometimes, not always. And I think there have been a few times when a casket was discovered in what was supposed to be an empty spot.
Maybe we need some of that ground penetrating radar technology to check this stuff out.
So, the only other thing I wanted to mention, which is totally unrelated to cemeteries, is on Summerfest in August where there's an attempt made to get the...
That's July, Summerfest. August is just the big parade.
Yeah, August, the train's...
The train, yeah.
The train, yeah. And I guess the owner of the station has requested some insurance. And there was a question about a rider on the town's insurance. And Joe Wetworth just called me and said that that can't happen, I guess. Do you have... Anybody know anything about that?
Yes, I've been talking with them, and she said they don't recommend having riding, like people riding the train. When I went back to them and explained there would be no riders, she said that it would be the owner of the train who should provide the insurance to the event.
Okay.
Not the town.
Not the town. Okay. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Sandra. We did have this... Actually, cemetery stuff did not come up on our list the other day, but we know it has been on the to-do list, so we'll make sure that we make progress there. Richard?
Yeah, I just want to say a brief thing about the diggin'. And Brian Turner Matt mentioned it a little while back ago. And he said the diggin' looked fine and the investigation... The investigation was never completed. And the diggin's not fine, and a lot of people are just still not happy with it. I'm not happy with it. I mean, you know, everybody's trying to fix the town up. And then we got roads that are paved and they look like logging roads. You know what I mean? The diggin's still looks horrible. The culvert sucks. You know what I mean? And we're still owed money by Chad Davis. You know, he owes us for what, fifteen, sixteen hundred feet of road that he's claimed that he did and he didn't do? So, that's my comment for the night.
Yeah, thank you. Public comments closed. Selector reports. Sandra, anything?
Not at this time. I'm building a list, but I think most of the stuff is already on our agenda, so I'll let that go for now.
Cool, same. Community reports, bicentennial.
Let's see. Barbecue at Spring Creek on July 2nd. Softball game July 2nd at four o'clock, five... I can't remember what's on the poster now, and I made it up. But sometime in the afternoon, there'll be a softball game. Whoever shows up, teams will be formed, fun will be had. So, that's July 2nd. July 16th is Summerfest. That's pretty much done, ready to put things out there. And then we get to August and the big parade, which is coming together. Tootie's done a lot of work on that. And Monson, Massachusetts will be here. Six to 12 people will be showing up. And the police chief and his cruiser, I think, is the only vehicle they're running. There's a whole lot going on there, and I guess we need to get together and help Tootie firm things up, but...
I think she's scheduled a meeting for the 27th.
Has she? Okay. That, okay. Fine. That's all I have to say on bicentennial for now.
Next up, beautification.
The plants are planted. Got a flag problem that Steve's going to get to, I hope.
Oh, yep. Yep, it will fix that. I did mention it a couple of days ago, but I will... I think I should be here.
We're in a high-wind area and our new flag equipment is being tested sorely.
Is it just because the poles themselves are... Need to be stronger, do you think?
I don't know. I'd like Steve to take a look and see what happened over there. I can't reach up to even get the stuff, so see if he can figure it out, and then we can talk to the flag guy. I can't reach up to even get the stuff, so see if he can figure it out, and then we can talk to the flag guy about that. That's all I have for beautification.
Super. Gold Business Premium Choice update. Is that for me?
Um, that is for everyone. So I heard from them on Tuesday, and they finally have all their permits that they needed, and work is set to begin on Monday.
Super.
I don't think they gave me any kind of timeframe for having it completed, but they said it was quite a nightmare getting all their permits and this and that, so.
Yeah.
But they're ready to go.
That's the hard part. Getting, getting the prep work is the hard part. When I, when I spoke with them last about that, he thought it'd only take a couple of weeks after they pressed go.
Okay.
So that, that basically puts us on schedule. That's basically what they said, June and then July roll out, so.
Yeah.
Super.
Any questions?
Yeah.
The result of it will be?
The result is that all the town roads will have fiber on them, so that anybody who is around, anybody who has a house in Monson uh, could sign up to get fiber internet through Premium Choice, should they choose to do so.
So do we, we already got fiber on it? How come they don't have it from town?
We do have it in town. So in town and then a bunch of side roads do, but this will do all the rest of the towns. Um, super. Okay, Dotty Hill Road?
Um, okay, so I think I, did you get my email yesterday about needing a staff, like, you had requested that? So I don't think I heard back from anybody. Um, so he wasn't available tonight to talk about it, but I do have, um, which I sent to you, pretty much the procedure. So it was, I, I was half expecting Loretta to be here tonight.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, so, yeah, I got, I got your message about his availability. I mean, I think we, we should need to find a time to speak with them, because the, the question that I have, I, I guess for everybody, benefit for everybody there's been a request for uh, from a property owner on the Dotty Hill Road to have the road discontinued. And so we are looking into what the status of that road is, 'cause it hasn't been maintained for some time. And so we're, uh, we just wanna make sure we follow the appropriate process.
And I, I have heard, um, I actually was talking to Brian today, and he feels like that is a mistake and that it is discontinued. And he had quite a story um, about what actually happened, 'cause apparently Spring Road was discontinued as well, but then brought back at the request. And so he, he feels like that's a mistake somewhere, that, that it's not discontinued. But um, it sounded like Loretta had really done her homework and she couldn't find anything that said, you know, that it was, so.
Yeah, maybe somebody who's more skilled at searching the registry could find.
Yeah.
I'm a little concerned that the last discontinuance is, what, 1940 something? Or was it earlier than that?
I don't know.
The document she has is quite old, and I find it hard to believe that it's been eighty years since anything was recorded
Yeah.
on a discontinued road. Plus, I'd really like to know exactly what section of the road we're talking about, and that's not clear from
Yeah.
anything that I've been able to find.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what we'll talk about.
So he, he did say that he was available both reading dates in July, but if you needed to move it up, I mean, I'm sure we could arrange another time. It doesn't have to be when there's already a select board scheduled. So if you guys wanna chat amongst yourselves and just throw out some dates, I can see, you know, if we can do it sooner, if you want, or...
Yeah. Yeah, let's, let's see how Sue comes back to life here, and then we'll find a date.
Give her a chance to play on this, too.
Yeah, so.
Um, good. Intern Town Manager appointment.
Okay, so the, uh, we're going to be appointing, Elena Woodard, the, well, the Select Board will be the new Intern Town Manager. Um, it's getting a little busy. It's getting a little heavy, so um, so she's gonna take over wearing that hat for the time being. So I, uh, I guess you've all agreed, and I do have um, her signature on the employment agreement. Just need you guys, and so if you wanna make that appointment for the record.
Have you spoke her new last name?
Z E L K A N. And yes, it's not Elena Woodard anymore.
Yes.
Even farther from the end of the alphabet now.
Yep.
And so I move that we appoint Elena Zelkin as Intern Town Manager.
Second?
And then this here um, is for the 911 addressing officer as well, so. That's just so, to make that official.
You made the corrections, I see.
I made the corrections.
Somebody did.
All right, demolition bid, 31 Water Street.
Okay, so I did ask, we did ask everyone to resubmit a bid and be very specific about whether or not it included um, filling in of the foundation. So here they are.
Just gonna be two of them. This is a grading bid.
What?
It said, this is a grading bid.
What's the, what does the envelope say?
Spring, fall grading bid.
Welcome to check out my basket, 'cause I meant... Put the other one back.
That's the one that we opened way back when?
Yeah. Nope, there actually are only supposed to be three. Our own course knows what the drill is.
After you.
Shall I start?
Yeah.
Bruce Thomas from Mollamatic says he agrees to quote demo unquote 31 Water Street for $22,500 and fill the foundation when done. Period.
Our um... Our bid package specifically talks about proper disposal, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we have one here from THA Logging and Excavation, says takedown house, put in dumpster and fill in foundation for $30,000. And then we have one from B&amp;W Logging and Excavation, uh, building demolition proposal, $23,000 to demo, demolition of building in compliance with the town of Monson demolition agreement. Remove building into containers, grade and cap affected area. And has a couple of references.
And that one's 23?
23.
And that meets all of our bid requirements, whereas the 22,51 might?
Well, it has to, right? I mean, all that really matters is the number that they put on the...
Yeah, I think it's pretty, pretty clear what needs to be done.
So have we worked with this gentleman from Mollamatic before?
Has he done, this is Bruce Thomas. Has he done any work with the town before?
Uh, I don't know. Uh, we buy the sand from him. As far as if he's, any work done, if he did, it's, it was before my time. I don't remember anything that he's done. I know that um, the B&amp;W?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah, that's Mike Wood.
He's done, I know he's done a lot of this, this type of work and is retiring and um, is actually interested in, in bidding on stuff, you know, that we have going on.
Did it say in contract, the demolition was gonna be paid by them to have removed?
Yeah.
And this will be charged to the property owner, too?
Yeah.
I'd be inclined to go with the guy who references, is a little bit more specific about what is going to happen. It's only $500 more.
Yeah.
And they require insurance, too?
Yeah, that's in the, in the contract, I think, yeah. I would, it would have been nice if this one also had some references and so on, and we can check, because we normally do that, right? We check, we check insurance and we check equipment and that kind of stuff.
It will be going forward, I can tell you that. Yeah, uh, yeah. So we, so yes, I, I mean, I think that checking references will be something that, you know, that will be important.
The other class?
For what it's worth, I, I'm, I'm agreeing with Sandra.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've also heard good things here. Um, I don't have any issue with that myself, I think, based on, based on what we know, if we can check references, then um, I would also be inclined to support that one.
Subject to equipment and reference check. Equipment insurance and reference check.
Okay, so um, do you wanna motion that now and then we'll proceed, or do that first and then, I mean, I, I...
As long as it's subject to, I'm okay with going ahead with it now.
Yep.
Do you wanna make your first motion?
Sure. We accepted this from B&amp;W Logging and Excavation in the amount of $23,000 to demolish the building at 31 Water Street. Moving it into containers, grading and camping affected area.
Second.
Subject to insurance, references and... Is that all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
North Gilbert Road speed bumps.
Okay, so um, you may remember, this was a topic of discussion last summer. There are some residents on, on that road who, you know, rightfully are upset about the speeding. Um, this was, this was one idea that was put forward. It's a, it's a temporary situation, uh, not for winter use. Um, I haven't seen the price myself, but I've heard that they're relatively inexpensive and would just be laid down in the summer and picked up in the winter. And then it's just been brought back to my attention again recently, and I couldn't quite remember where we left off. I, I thought that it was left, that that wasn't an actual plan to move forward with that, but um, and then Tyler said that he's, you know, there's, there's some information from the DOT about the situation, so if you wanna take it away, then...
Yeah, so let's certainly look at, like costing out some, some of that on a temporary basis. Let's also look, I mean, there's a lot of different things, different technologies, so on and so forth, so um, different types of...
Spike mats.
Yeah, I was thinking like there's, you know, there's the longer...
That's my preference, but it's not gonna work.
I was looking at some online and there, it's like even, I mean, speed bumps, a 25 mile an hour speed bump is very different than like a parking lot speed bump. And so
Yeah.
we just shouldn't put a parking lot speed bump on a road that you're allowed to drive 25 miles an hour on. But anyway, point being, I think we should do some diligence on, on what we might be able to do in the meantime. Uh, and since this last meeting, actually, um, we met again with, with the DOT group, and they're now crafting their scope of services, which actually we should have pretty soon.
They've got a few days.
Yeah. Um, and this, the, this, the scope that they're looking at is essentially the part of town with sidewalks. So it is, goes all the way down to the intersection of the Mollamatic Road, where it splits off North Gilbert Road, goes up to where Blanchard Road splits off of Route 15, and it's gonna go, I think, to Elliotsville Road.
That far?
The sidewalk doesn't go there.
No, but I, I, from that area somewhere.
Yeah, between Homewood Hill and there.
Yeah, at least to Center Street. Sorry, that's in the sidewalk, at Center Street. Um, the gateway is into town. So um, as part of that review process and determining what our next steps are gonna be, we can have a discussion with them about more specific things we might be able to do in the immediate term.
Okay.
Um, so we'll come at it from two sides.
Okay, and do you know when, um, you, is that the list you're waiting for, or is that a future meeting that you'll have with them to discuss that?
The, what they're gonna send us is a scope of services, and then we would basically go out, we would have to decide if we want to um, pursue, pursue that program. And that's like a, the next stage there is basically hiring a consultant to make a plan for you. So it is, it is a process timewise, and we would have to appropriate funds for it.
Okay, so it might be something to consider for the short term.
Yeah, so nothing would be done through that program this year.
Okay, all right. Well, um, I'll poke around a little bit anyway, see what I can find and...
For temporary speed bumps?
Yeah.
The very first person to approach me about North Gilbert Road was Jimmy Erickson, who nearly got taken out on his tractor by somebody speeding down North Gilbert Road, and yeah.
Oh, it's crazy.
With me outside the post office, and it was after our meeting with the state. I said, "As a matter of fact, we're looking at that now." And he's, he's not alone. I live on that road now.
Even coming by the office, you know, some people, I'm just like, seriously?
And it's not just North Gilbert, but that's a good starting point.
Yes, definitely. Um, and just real quick, while we're on the subject of speed, um, so just an update on the speed sign. So it's been much troubleshooting done, and so what happened is it's got a burnt board, um, that, that top light board is, is burnt. So we're waiting for a new one, and...
What does a new sign cost?
Uh, that I don't know.
I think they're several thousand dollars.
Yeah, at least.
Okay, so we're not there yet.
No, we're not there yet. And that's really the only thing that's wrong with it, and now we've got new batteries and so...
It's a rebuilt sign, or will be soon.
It will be, will be refurbished, but anyway, um, and so everybody knows that the whole situation with the locks and this and that, so um, there will actually be new locks put on it as well, wickies, that will be hanging in the office. Um, and nobody will have them, 'cause somebody had been into it, and I don't know if this caused the, the, um, the board to burn up or not, but wires had been moved, there's ribbons that jump from board to board to power them, and somebody had plugged them into single individual boards, this ribbon and this one. And so I don't know if that caused it to burn out or not, but there's that, and, you know, the fiasco of just waiting how long to even get it open. So yeah, the locks will be replaced, and the, the board is expected to be in either um, the end of this week or beginning of next week, so. And it should be a pretty quick...
Will we be thinking about installing it in the same place or moving it further up?
Um, open for discussion. I have heard, you know, was it you or Eric or somebody that mentioned moving it further up the road, which...
I suspect it might be more effective if it was moved up closer to Blanchard Road, so that...
Yeah, or even like right before Peter Heights or something like that, you know, maybe.
By the time they get to the bottom of the hill, especially a truck with a lot of mass, it's...
Yeah.
I sometimes wonder if they're gonna make the curve.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, um, can definitely talk about that. So anyways, hopefully it'll be back up and running soon.
Good. Nice. Next up, cloud contract.
Yep, so it's that time again, so uh, got that all ready to go, and we're just gonna fix some, um, some typos and some...
Some numbering?
Some numbering and, and uh, we'll get that put out to bid. Um, so, so you guys have looked it over, and I, I mean, are we ready to go with the, you know, obviously we'll fix the typos and everything that you said.
I didn't see anything material.
Okay, all right. Um, so we will make that a priority, to get that posted. Um, we were thinking um, two to three weeks of running the ad, and when shall we make the deadline? Um, you know, we, we almost, we almost got stopped last time, so hopefully, you know, we're thinking if we get it put right out, you know, within the next week or so, then, you know, maybe by the end of July.
Yeah, it was something I was planning to be able to review bids at the second meeting in July.
Are we earlier than last year on the timetable for bidding the bids?
No, well, we didn't do it last year, but when we did do it, we were like into, the snow was flying, was it not?
Almost.
Yeah.
So it was scary, but, but we got the bids back, but then it cut.
Yeah.
Put out again and, and it just...
Yeah.
And it was gonna be very specific as to what we're looking for, so we don't have to do a big...
The problem we went through, what we went through last time was, I don't know, that was the cloud contract. Did we not get any bids the first time?
No, we did, and, but um, they didn't have equipment, they didn't have experience, they didn't have references, so it was put back out to bid, and then the second time around, the same two bidders were the only ones that bid, only they each raised their price by $10,000, and I don't remember if it went back out again or not, but then...
It, it also, it was not a timely process from start to finish, so we'll stay on... It it also, it was not a timely process from start to finish, so we'll stay on it this time.
Okay, so second July meeting, we will be reviewing the bids. Okay, good.
All right, no new business on the agenda, so I'll move to be adjourned.
Second.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Hey, any information on the hot dog thing or whatever, they going to go the other side of the road?
I don't, so maybe my eyes are failing me, but it looked like they did the other side of the road, like at the top of the hill. Going up the hill. I hadn't driven up there, so I don't know. I saw a truck driving by today.
Have they gone all the way? How far down have they gone towards Rachel?
Quite a ways, if not all the way.
Because I was thinking maybe they were doing that half and then they were going to turn around and come back. But I haven't seen signs of the equipment for a few days.
Yeah. Yeah, I haven't.
Maybe they figured they evened it out here in the middle of town.
Yeah.